I would like to call to order the January 21st, 2025 meeting of the Colrain Township Zoning Commission. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, Happy New Year to everyone, and congratulations to our Ohio State Buckeyes for winning the national championship last night. It feels great having a winning team. Welcome to those in attendance, township staff, and my fellow commissioners, and just a friendly reminder to everyone present tonight to please silence your devices at this time. Mr. Peters, can we have a roll call, please? Oh, you're not Mr. Peters, sorry.
Mr. Bachman.
Present.
Mr. Hauser.
Here.
Mr. Westfall.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. McMullin, or Chair McMullin.
Here.
All right, Commissioners, on our agenda tonight, we have two sets of meeting minutes from previous meetings. For the August 20th, 2024 minutes, those were just received within the past 24 hours. So will I need a motion to table, or can I just table them?
I think as the chair, you can table them.
Okay.
We don't go by Roberts rules in the commission.
Thank you. So we will table the discussion and approval or denial of the August 20th, 2024 minutes until our February meeting. Next up, we have minutes from our October 15th, 2024 meeting. Does anyone have any edits or suggestions for those? Hearing none, I need a motion in a second for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of October 15th, 2024.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bachman.
Yes.
Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Mr. Westfall.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. McMullin.
I will abstain because I was not present. Next on the agenda is a public address, so we do need to welcome members of the public who would like to address the zoning commission with any items on tonight's agenda. However, if you are planning to speak during either of our public hearings, we will invite you to the podium during the respective hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay, I see none. So we do not have a final development plan this evening, but we do have two public hearings. The first public hearing is case CZC-91-2, a minor modification to a final development plan. And does staff have a presentation?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, the first case is CZC-91-2. This is for 11335 Dallas Boulevard. It's a minor modification. The parcel number and zoning district are listed on the screen in your packet. The applicant is Midwest Stonescapes, and the property owner is Stone Valley Farms. The purpose of this minor modification is construction of a new building. The design is similar to Midwest Stonescape building next door. The initial approval for the final development plan was approved in 1991 through case CZC-91-2, which is the one we're modifying. The district has evolved. Portions of the planned district have been sold for commercial uses over time. The location is a pleasant-run Beavis character area, and this is a major corridor in western Colrain Township. The focus area is the northwest quadrant of Hamilton Avenue and I-275 as a primary business center. And as you can see on the map, this is the proposed building. This is, this will need to be approved by zoning certificate for the specifics of the building and the architecture, but this is what's proposed. So we have a concrete drive, the building. Originally, they had some parking behind it. They've reduced that to kind of keep that buffer that we have along Houston Road. That was kind of a major concern back in the 90s when this was first approved. Monument landscape, monument sign and a landscape in the front of the building. So it's a typical building with a few parking spaces. They have not broken any of the parking regulations that we recently adopted. They will have a landscape island without too many continuous spaces. So this is just to give you an idea of what the layout will look like. This is elevation, the concept elevation, the final plans is not what we're approving. We're approving the, having a building on that lot. And the reason that we're here is because when the final development plan was originally approved, a building was not on that final development plan. So we're just doing a minor modification, saying, okay, we can put a building on this parcel within the final development plan. This is the parcel that we're referencing. So this is the 40-foot buffer that we have behind along Houston Road. This is the front where they would come in, and you can see it's a pretty major intersection here with 275 and Hamilton. We've got this Wendy's up here, AdPro signs, Midwest Stonescapes, and I believe there's still a couple vacant parcels. This is the final development plan for reference, the way that it was approved in 1991 as phase one of Houston Park. It just has been very slow on the developing throughout the decades. So the staff recommendation is approval of the minor modification of the planned district with a few conditions. Number one, the applicant must submit detailed building plans, as I referenced earlier, including architectural elevations and materials for review approval and approval prior to issuing a zoning certificate. Landscaping and buffering must be installed in accordance with the governing resolution to minimize visual and auditory impacts on the adjacent properties. The parcel must maintain an impervious surface ratio of 75% or less. That's consistent with our current zoning resolution. A 40-foot landscape buffer with earth mounding shall be maintained along Houston Road. That was an initial condition of the approval in 1991. This buffer shall be free of any zone, or any building, parking, or storage areas. Ground-mounted signage has to meet all the standards of the zoning resolution as adopted October 10th. All temporary signs, banners, promotional sign materials are prohibited upon the site. Outdoor sales, display, and storage also prohibited upon the site. And where conditions of the modification are in conflict with previously adopted conditions of the planned district, the more restrictive condition may apply. So this has been modified many times, this Houston Park, and the zoning resolution has certain rules, and we're approving certain conditions today. So we're just saying if things are in conflict, that the more restrictive condition has to apply. Ms. McMullin?
At this time, we need to open our public hearing. Can we have a motion in a second, please?
I'm moved to open the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bachman.
Yes.
Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Mr. Westfall.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. McMullin.
Yes. And is the applicant present?
He is.
Would you like to address the zoning commission?
Sure.
And for the record, just state your name and address.
My name is Ryan Davis. I'm at 3694 Hanley Road. And basically, we own the property that is next to the parcel that we're talking about. We're basically just wanting to build another building like we've already built where we currently are. Everything kind of matching with Stonefront and kind of the same facade as far as same type of use and everything. It's pretty much all we're looking to do, is just kind of reproduce what we've already done, just next door.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
And your property, the building that exists now, is that 11331? Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
So it's left of that?
That's correct.
The building that you're planning on building?
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Was there anyone else in the audience who wished to speak during the public hearing? Okay, then I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
In a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bachman.
Yes.
Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Mr. Westfall.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. McMullin.
Yes.
All right. Gentlemen, any last questions for staff?
I did have one question for staff, and the question is, you, Mr. Peters, you had mentioned that this was, we were just kind of approving this to have a building, which I understand. Will this come back before this commission for the final elevations and final site plan, or is that a staff?
No, at that point, if it, if it, sorry.
Go ahead.
At that point, if it meets the conditions of the planned district, then it would be administrative approval, just like if Meyer came in and wanted to put a fence up, that wouldn't come before y'all. It would, since it doesn't, isn't in conflict with anything in the final development plan, then it would be administrative approval.
Okay, thank you.
If they want to do something unforeseen, like make it 80 feet tall, then it would have to come back.
Any additional questions? Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
No, please, you go ahead.
Sorry, to accept the, or to accept the planned zoning district for CZC-91-2, minor modification?
With the?
Staff recommendations.
Yes, with the eight staff recommendations.
Staff recommendations, yeah.
Would anyone like to second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in second for approval, and we have a roll call.
Mr. Bachman.
Yes.
Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Mr. Westfall.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. McMullin.
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
All right, so next up is another public hearing for case CZC-92-3, a minor modification to the final development plan. And do you have another presentation?
I do. The monitor crashed, so.
Oops.
So I'll need to restart that. I know this has never happened before, so. Is the board ready?
Yep.
All right, we have case number CZC-92-3. This is for 9471 Colrain Avenue. It's also a minor modification. The parcel number and zoning district are listed on your screen. The applicant is Jonathan Woker, and the property owner is Northgate Entertainment LLC. This is at the Northgate Mall site and the former theater. As we can see here, this is the map of the theater. One sec. I guess a slide escaped me somehow. But the applicant is requesting a modification to the approved final development plan for the theater site, and they would like to make it a family entertainment center, and it is to have go-karts, and they're going to keep a couple of the theaters if approved. And this is in conformance with the plan, the comprehensive plan for Colrain Township in that it, Colrain Avenue is a major economic corridor, and this will fit into the character of that neighborhood. It also will not, it will not pollute the character of neighboring properties because it's a similar use. We just felt that the board would need to approve the use, since it is different and it's bringing in a new use to that site. So it was in slight conflict with conditions of the original final development plan, therefore the applicant is seeking the board's approval. So here's the site as proposed, and you can see the yellow line around it is the survey that was recently done. The building is 58,720 square feet. The main entrance is protruding a little bit into the interior, and I think we all know the Northgate Mall site and the theater site, where this would go. Here's a little bit of a zoomed up view of that site. It's nine acres, and it has an overabundance of parking. The applicant is not requesting to modify any of the exterior landscaping, parking, so it won't trigger, trigger the need for a master parking plan, and it won't trigger the need for updating any of the landscaping, since everything they're doing is to the inside. So the commission is strictly looking at the use of this parcel and whether or not this is an appropriate use for this planned district. Here's an aerial view, and I like this one because it shows the cars, kind of gives you a scale to the size of the building. This anchor was an addition onto the mall to replace a former JCPenney store. This is just the yellow outline, shows you the survey that was recently done. It shows you the exact extent of where the parking spaces are. So as you can see, parking is in abundance in the site. This is a map of all the stores in the mall, and shows kind of how they're divided and where it would be. It's right here where this little race car is. That was for the go-karts. And here's the former Sears anchor, and the former Macy's anchor, and then the divided junior boxes. Side note, I thought it's funny that Google Maps says Northgate Mall, straightforward mall with a cinema. So anyway, this is the anchor that would be replaced. So the staff recommends approval of the requested minor amendment with the following conditions: that any proposed changes to the building's exterior, including signage, must be reviewed and approached, or approved in accordance with the zoning resolution. I made that condition because the applicant says they're not really doing anything with the building exterior. If that's true, and they're just doing things that are administratively approval, like painting or something like that, then everything's fine. But if they do anything that's more extensive and intense to the exterior of the building, then they would have to come back before the board. Ms. McMullin?
Thank you. So at this time, we need to open our public hearing. Can we have a motion in a second, please?
Make a motion that we open the public hearing for this particular case?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bachman.
Yes.
Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Mr. Westfall.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. McMullin.
Yes. And is the applicant present? For the record, please state your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Jonathan Woker. My address is 5721 Dragon Way, Suite 300, Cincinnati, Ohio 45227. I'm a planner with McBride Del Clarion. I have with me tonight Alex Patel. He's one of the owners of Northgate Entertainment LLC. They have purchased the former Escape Theater, and as staff has presented, we're asking the zoning commission to approve an amendment to the final development plan to allow the change of use to a family entertainment center. As was mentioned, in addition to go-karts, there would be trampolines, multi-level playgrounds, concession area, party rooms, rope courses, obstacle courses, arcades, typical type of equipment that you'd see in a family entertainment. We did indicate in our application that we may retain some of the theaters. That plan has since changed, so at this point, there is no intent to keep some of the theater rooms, but we are asking for approval of the family entertainment use. And we agree with the proposed conditions. At this point, we don't have plans for exterior changes, but we do understand that when and if that happens, we'll have to submit plans to township for further review. So we believe that this is appropriate for this area. It's not a drastic change from the indoor theater that was previously there, and that there's adequate parking and so on, as staff presented. That's all I have for the commission. If you have questions for me or the owner, I'll try and answer them. Appreciate your time.
Any questions?
The only question I have is, is the entrances in the mall and outside, are both of those going to be used?
I believe just, I'll have Mr. Patel speak to it. Go ahead.
And Mr. Patel, for the record, please state your name and address.
It's Alex Patel, 7460 Northwest 108th Avenue, Parkland, Florida 33076.
Thank you.
And yes, as of now, both entrances will be open. Obviously, we have to close the mall entrance with the mall timings.
Mm-hmm.
But our entrance, main entrance, will still be open until 10:00 PM on weekends and 9:00 PM on weekdays.
Could you just speak a little bit to the investment that you're putting back into the building, dollar amount? I've heard some of the things that are going to happen, but maybe?
The total investment from, from the demo to the finish, it'll be close to around $3 million between the equipments and everything. The equipment is the majority of the cost. The go-kart rack itself costs, you know, close to $1 million. You know, the trampolines, playgrounds, arcades, it'll be around, close to $3 million.
The application says bowling, is that still part of the?
No, the, the, one of the plans were to keep some of the screens and the bowling alley, but now we are going away from that. From the last 10 years, this is what we have done since 2015. We have built six centers so far, and never worked with a movie theater, so we don't want to get in the area where we don't have expertise in.
So the six centers that you've done, I assume that's nationally?
Two in Connecticut, that's where we started in 2015. One in Pennsylvania, then we went back to Connecticut, we did another one in Connecticut, one in New Jersey, and, and this one. So this will be the sixth one.
So this is your, your first in the Cincinnati market?
First in Cincinnati market.
Do you see other ones in this market?
Down the road, we are planning to do a bowling standalone by itself, probably in the Northgate area, but again, once this, if this one is successful, then in three to four years, we are planning to do a standalone bowling entertainment center.
So I'm assuming in your other six locations, that you have security measures in place?
Yes, on, on weekends, we have security, and Stratford was, our first location was a little bit in a rough neighborhood, so we should hire local police officers on busy days, and we used to pay the town for the, for their time.
So on non-busy days, you will have your own security, on busy days, maybe potentially?
Our first preference is always police officers on duty, but like Pennsylvania location, they do not offer that option, so we have security instead of the police officers.
About how much of a crowd do you have at one time? Like what's, what's your average?
Saturday being the busiest out of all seven days, and peak time is from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM on Saturdays.
What do you find are some of your biggest challenges, or your biggest challenge?
Just finding good help, but we, we are, you know, we work very well. Most of our, 90% of our employees are teenagers, college kids, in summertime, kids coming back home and looking for a summer job. So, so even the families, they like that, you know, their kids have a place, a good place where they can go and work and grow themselves.
Okay, that's it for me. Any other questions?
The only, only other, how about hours of operations? What, where do you go, 9, 10 o'clock at night, or?
So Monday to Thursday, it's 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM on, during, this is during the school hours, school, when the school is in session. Friday, 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Saturday, we open up at 8:00 AM, but it's only for sensory kids from 8 to 10, and no other crowd is allowed. And from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, the regular crowd is allowed. Sunday, we open up at 9:00 o'clock, but the first two hours is only for toddlers of five years and under. And then after 11:00 AM, 11 to 9, we open for regular hours.
That's awesome. I'm glad that you have something for sensory kids. I love that. Any additional questions? Okay, thank you. So at this time, we need, oh, I should ask, are there anyone in attendance that wishes to speak? Nope. Okay, so we do need a motion in a second to close our public hearing.
Make a motion that we close the public hearing on this particular case?
I'll second it.
And can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bachman.
Yes.
Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Mr. Westfall.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. McMullin.
Yes.
All right, any further discussion?
Just one item, and it's just a clarification, there's two addresses that are illustrated that are in conflict. So we have 9500 on some of the documents, and we have 9471 on some of the others. I'm not sure what the real address is, but probably we should clarify that.
Okay, I think 9500 is the mall, and the 9471 is the anchor. So I apologize for the inconsistency there. I think at different times, going in and editing and working on it, we put the anchor and we put the mall, so.
Hey, anything else? All right, is there anyone who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval of CZC-92-3 with the staff recommendations as submitted to us.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion in a second for a, an approval. Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Bachman.
Yes.
Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Mr. Westfall.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. McMullin.
Yes.
All right, so motion carries. Welcome to Colrain.
We'll be in touch.
Thank you. All right. Now we're slim pickings on our agenda, so we do not have any informal consult reviews, no old business? No?
No, no. We do have one announcement.
Okay, an administrative report?
Yes. Okay, so if you'll turn your attention to the screen, this is the first part of our Colrain Zoning Commission bylaws, and we're going to look at Article 1, Section 2 and 3. So 2 is the new chairperson, vice-chairperson have to, shall assume office annually at the regular meeting in February and hold office for a period of a year. Number 3 is the election of officers shall be determined at a regular meeting prior to the February meeting. A simple majority of the entire commission is required to determine the outcome of this election. Mr. Miller and I felt as though we should read this into the record as, to meet condition number 3, where we're determining that the election will be held at the next meeting, and seek the approval of the commissioners to have the election held at the next meeting for the chairperson and vice-chairperson. So are we all in agreeance on that?
So we're going to elect tonight, but vote on it next month? Is that correct?
No, we're, we're introducing the idea that we're going to vote on it, elect and vote on it next month. So I thought, we, Mr. Miller and I felt that number 3 required us to put this in the agenda tonight, so that there was kind of a notification that this was happening at the next meeting. And Ms. McMullin pointed out to us that we needed to do so as well, so we thought this is the most prudent thing to do.
Agreed.
Okay.
We'll have an altercation.
It'll be all day long.
Is there a party act?
Maybe a cruise.
Six balls.
All right, sounds good. Number 12 announcements?
None.
You don't want to introduce?
Oh, yeah, okay, so we have a new, a new alternate member, Mr. Dennis. I think we all met him before the meeting, and Mr. Dennis Wander. And, yes, Wander. So he's very passionate about the township. He's knowledgeable, and if you want to just tell everybody a little bit about yourself, Mr. Wander?
You guys want to know?
You can step up. Say your name and address for the record.
Dennis Wander, 4795 Day Road. We moved into the township from Green Township in July of 2014. And as I was telling all the Davids and Maggie, when I wanted to get back involved, I sent some information via the website. I promised myself I was going to stay out of politics. I was first elected when I was 20, 19-years-old for city council on North College Hill, back in 1979, just a few years ago, and took office January 1st of 1980, and served five terms, did run for mayor and lose once. So that's my political history, other than some visits to Washington and our wonderful capital up there in Columbus. So I looked forward, wanted to get involved. Um, so I look forward, wanted to get involved, um, living in the community in any way that I can, and, uh, look forward to, uh, helping out wherever you guys need me.
Thank you.
Very happy to have Mr. Wander.
All right, so our next meeting is scheduled for February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, and we do have a case?
We do. We have a case from Rumke, and we have a, um, a text amendment. And we have an election, inauguration.
All right.
And I, Ms. McMullin, I'd like to also thank Mr. Hauser for, uh, stepping up to be one of our permanent members, uh, from the alternate positions. Uh, so we are happy to have you on a more consistent basis, although you're always available, and you, uh, somehow are, is it your sister that's poisoning you on this?
My wife.
Brother-in-law? Yeah.
Yeah, she, she helped me in a lot of different things.
So, again, th- thank you for being available, and it's great to have you up there.
Thank you.
Yep, and then also, even though he's not here, thank you to Mr. Bruce Garing for all of his many, many, many years working on the commission, and happy retirement to him. And so if there's nothing else, uh, thank you to my fellow, fellow commissioners, staff, everyone who is present tonight, all in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.